Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is the Moscow Public Works and Finance Committee for Monday, March the 14th. First item on the agenda is the approval of the February 22 minutes of the meeting.
I have no problem with that.
And they're okay with me, too?
And okay by me, so the minutes are approved. Next up, the dispersment report for February of 2016. Sarah Andor-Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you the dispersment report. Don used to go through these numbers one by one. You can read them as well as I can, so we prefer to stand for questions if you like. Would note that there are quite a few expenditures this month, that we had our one-time payment for the setup of the single-stream recycling, so that was a large part of that, as well as we've had several vehicles that we purchased and had our yearly contribution to the state insurance fund for our workman's compensation premium.
That's a triple threat right there.
Yep.
Wow.
So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to have the accounting manager and I put our heads together and answer it, otherwise you'll need to sign those once it's approved.
With the special.
With the special, yes.
So, anything, Walter?
Nope.
Good by me, too. So, thank you.
I'm just learning the numbers, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, right after that, we have the fourth quarter financial report from July 1st to September 30th of 2015, for fiscal year 2015.
Okay, again, this is the fourth quarter report. You've got a couple of different documents. One is a fairly detailed accounting that you have, summary financial report, and then you have a little bit more summary financial report. Again, with that, it is by law, we have to publish quarterly reports in the paper, and that's what we're doing today, so we're bringing it to you, and we'll stand for any questions you have.
So we've gone over each of the individuals in that one already, so there should be no surprises with the totals that are added up. So for me, I'm good by those.
Yeah, I had some questions earlier today, but Sarah cleared them up for me, so I'm good.
Okay.
Do you have any motion?
No, we just kind of agree among ourselves that we're good to go on that one, then.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. It's so nice having your commentary on these.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Can you get the sign back?
Okay, next up is a public meeting for 1033 Alturis Drive and Lot Division.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
All right, so as you said before yesterday, we have a Lot Division request for a parcel currently addressed as 1033 Alturis Drive. The subject property is located south of Alturis Drive, shown here, outlined in red. We have South Blaine Street here to the west, and Alturis Drive going up to the northeast and connecting to State Highway 8. Taking a look at the zoning, the subject property is in the multifamily residential R4 zone, as well as adjacent properties to the east and the west. Across Alturis to the north are residential office zone properties, and to the south is R3 medium-density residential. Zooming in a little bit, as you can see, majority of the lots to the west have already been divided for townhouse, twin home developments, sorry. The one directly to the west has also already been approved for division and has been constructed on, it's just not updated with our parcel data yet. And then across the street, that residential office zoned area is, has been constructed as a townhouse development, and those are townhouse lots. So this is the remaining one of two that are, that has not been divided yet. The applicant, or the existing lot is a 5,143 square foot parcel with 56 feet in width, and the applicant is requesting that it just be split right down the middle to create two parcels of 2,571 and a half square feet, that are each 28 feet wide. The purpose of the request is to create a twin home on the, on the two parcels, and in the R4 zone, the minimum lot width for twin homes is 25 feet, and the lot area is 2,250 square feet. The proposed lot division meets both of those requirements. Setbacks for a twin home, the exterior side is eight feet from the side, the interior, of course, has none, and then the front is 15 feet, or 20 for a garage, and 20 feet in the rear. So the proposal would meet all of these minimum requirements. Per city of Moscow requirements, for lot divisions, property owners within 600 feet have been notified, and the site has been posted seven days prior to this meeting, and staff's recommendation is to take public comment, if applicable, and recommend approval of the lot division requests with no conditions.
Okay, so relative to public comment, does anyone out there wish to speak relative to this application? No takers? Thoughts?
Well, a couple of, I don't have any problem with this, it's what we've been doing along there. Can you back up a couple of slides, please, Becky? One more, I thought. Yeah, right there.
The zoning one?
The zoning one.
Okay.
I've been on the council while all these lot divisions have occurred, but I don't know that I've remember, remember why it started.
Because we.
Were they anticipated? Were they, did somebody think of doing one, and it worked out really well, so they did a second? Is it market-driven? You were on PNC, you probably did it.
I think we probably did do it. What we did was we passed the twin home townhouse ordinance that enabled the zero lot line development, where you actually own the house and the ground under it, as opposed to sort of a condominium style, where you own the ground jointly with somebody else. So you own your own ground right underneath, and when we passed that, which was three, four years ago, three years ago, maybe?
A little longer than that, I think.
So somewhere in there, and so then the idea began to catch on, that you can have your own home, be able to get financing through the banks, because you actually own your turf, and it provided some more affordable housing options for people.
It seems to work really well. I mean, as far as I know, I know one person or two that live there and don't seem to have any problem with it.
Yeah, when Larry Lepelman came in, he was the first one, I think, who'd split one of these lots, and it just seemed to be a great place for it, a nice transition from the single-family over on, in the Indian Hills area, so, and transition out of the R3, so, seemed to be really good and fit right in with the scheme.
So the whole rest of the neighborhood seems to have taken this bit in their teeth and run with it, and so it fits in with the rest of the development around it, and I think it's a good idea to provide some more affordable housing options, or less unaffordable, we'll phrase it that way.
So if I may, Becky, what's going to happen with the RO? How do you do residential office when you've got those small width lots?
Well, it's all constructed currently. I actually tucked in a picture here of Google Earth, since our image is so outdated. So this is that residential office area, so those are townhouses.
But there are no offices?
No. So residential office allows for the variety of residential uses, and then, and then office use as well, so.
Okay.
It's all just strictly townhouse developments, and again, those are on individually plotted lots, so that the individuals own their.
Turf.
Their turf, and their structure.
Okay. Catherine?
No.
Okay, looks good to us. Consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, definitely.
I think it's a good idea, and fits the rest of the area. Rock on.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Moscow Citywide Sidewalk Replacement Project for fiscal year 2016. Bid results and contract award. Scott Bontrager. Good day, we haven't heard from you for a while.
Yeah, you'll be hearing more of me pretty soon. So the 2016 sidewalk program bid results, we've been doing this program for about five years now, and every year it's been pretty successful at helping out the various property owners and participants, and making more affordable prices to replace sidewalks and other concrete-related stuff throughout the city. So this year, we put it out to five local contractors, of which we got three responsive bids back on March 4th. The bids we got back were based upon an estimated quantity that equated to roughly $30,000, which we have funded, or budgeted for, which is a guaranteed minimum from city funding for the project, but then, of course, it grows from there, depending upon the participation from various property owners who choose to use the program. So of the three responsive bids we got back, they range from $29,500 to $55,300, and the low bid this year is actually from McCall's Classic Construction, who usually comes in second compared to Knox Construction, who usually gets it every year. But yeah, based upon the results we received this year, it's just as good a price as we've received in the past.
Is it okay to ask a question?
Absolutely.
The question I had, had to do with mobilization, and that's where they, they made their, that's where they were able to come in lower.
Yeah, what they had done is they had taken, transferred, you know, some of the funding, or some of the money that they would use for that, and put it higher into the quantities for other things.
Okay, that's what I figured, because there was, there was a big change in the, in the other numbers, but they're also the closest? Are they close by two? Is that why they took it out of mobilization?
No, they're actually down in Clarkston also.
Oh, okay.
So Knox Concrete's down in Lewiston, McCall's is in Clarkston, and Curtis is over in Pullman.
Yeah, I just kind of was curious, and then I thought, I didn't, in trying to learn all the stuff, I thought, well, is it because they figured out there was a way, their mileage was lesser? I just thought it was kind of interesting that they knocked it out of there.
No, it's, it's a little bit of a game. With mobilization, it's the ability for them to get paid upfront for various things, but, you know, with raising their prices higher and other things, they know that they're going to do a larger quantity of certain items, so they're purposely changing the pricing on those.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary?
And this is something we can, a project comes up, an additional project, we have unit prices, so we can.
Mm-hmm.
Good, great. It's been a great boon in the past.
Yes, it has.
When, when do you start hearing from the public, the people that want to participate in the program? Do you have a waiting list? Do you have a standing list? Do you, how do you announce it, and when does the phone ring?
It's pretty much published on our website at all times, and we also go to Farmer's Market, Art Walk, various things, to kind of display it to everybody, but, yeah, we receive calls all year round, or we receive it by email. There's a place on the website where they can request us to come out and evaluate their stuff. Typically, the program begins in April and ends in October, and if we haven't gotten to them at that time, we get them on the next year's one, but we haven't actually run into that yet. We've, we've gotten everybody that we've needed to every year.
You get a number of fellow employ, ye did this last year, what is it, and how do I do it? Or the man across the street did it, I'm interested?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
There is definitely a word-of-mouth going out there about it, so, and we do have repeat people who own various developments, or different rentals and everything, that are interested in doing it every year, because we have the ability with the large amount of stuff that we do, if they need to just replace, like, a couple panels that are broken and stuff, it's a very effective means for doing that.
So that means you're not at capacity yet?
No. What we do is provide them a $30,000 minimum of various city projects, and then the participants start kind of coming in from there, of the various residential participants.
So is there something you'd like to see happen?
We haven't, we haven't had to yet. I mean, they typically start calling as soon as it gets a little bit warmer.
Now, we've got a downtown business program as well.
Mm-hmm.
Has it worked through this contract?
Yes. Yeah, and with that, that program, the city participates in 30% of the cost for downtown businesses, and we've done it for a whole wide variety. I mean, we've done everything over there around Second and Washington, Leito County Title did it last year.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. We've done around the Co-op, Kenworthy, so yeah, a lot of people have participated in it. It's been fairly successful.
I'm good.
Me, too.
Okay, consent agenda, I think.
Sir.
Scott. Scott. Don't run away, Scott.
I'm not going anywhere.
Pavement preservation project fiscal year 2016, bid results and contract award. Assisted by Tyler.
Hi.
Hello. So, this year, we put out two different options for our pavement preservation products. First one is the slurry seal, and the second one would be the asphalt rubber chip seal. Maybe Tyler want to touch on the two different types.
Should I elaborate on that a little bit? As we've discussed, we have, we really want to do surface projects, it's, it's the way that we try and maintain and keep our asphalt going longer, and this was the surface project portion of our pavement management program this year. You may recall, last year, we put out a project for an AR chip seal, which is an asphalt rubber chip seal. They modify the emulsion with, with an asphalt rubber, it's actually ground tires, and so it's a nice product, because we're recycling a material, and then it's very useful in the roadway. We put it out last year, it hasn't been done in our area, our immediate area. Last year, there was a large project in the tri-cities that we were able to go out and see. It's something that started in the southwest and kind of made its way up the coast, it's a very effective surface treatment. We had bids come in really high last year, and so we just, we weren't able to do it, we didn't have enough quantity to get it done, and, and the contractors had problems getting the right aggregate, getting the right rock crushed for the project. This year, as we went to put it out, we, we wanted to take another try at it, because we have several streets that it's a really good alternative for, that if we don't do it here in the next short period of time, we've got a brief window that we can do this, then we're looking at a far more expensive fix, you know, stripping off all the asphalt and replacing all the asphalt, and possibly extensive base work, and, and then that triggers having to do all the handicap ramps, the ADA ramps throughout the project, and so we're really hopeful that it would come in at a good price. We'd had some indication in talking with contractors that they thought it would, they'd figured out the aggregate, and that they'd expressed a willingness to really sharpen their pencil, because they wanted to have an example project in our area, and what we found was that the asphalt rubber project came in 25% lower than last year's bid, so they, they really swung for it, and so we were, we were pretty encouraged seeing that price come in, and so we were also happy, and we had, we were the first city to do a slurry seal in this whole area, and now there are several cities that are doing them. It's really starting to catch on. The first year that we did it, we had two bidders, and now we have four bidders, and so it was really great to see that kind of interest in, in our, our preservation packages. So this year, what we're proposing is that we do the asphalt rubber. We, we bid it, as Scott said, as an either-or, so that we would cover our bases. We wanted to put them both out, so that if one came in too expensive, we could then select the other. In this case, we did have a good slurry bid, but we also had this, this great asphalt rubber bid, and so we, we want to give that a try, and so that's what we're proposing to move forward.
Gary?
There, the square yards that you're going to get are quite a few less for the asphalt rubber chip seal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And just about half?
A fourth.
So, the, the advantage of the asphalt rubber is that you think it will totally rehabilitate it, I mean, there must be a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, there is a big difference, and, and that's, that's a good question, Gary. The, the slurry seal is not a structural product, the slurry seal is not intended to be structural, and so the range of pavements you can put a slurry seal down on is pretty narrow. What it is, is really keeping a new road new, a new road new, is, is what a slurry seal is intended for. It seals it back up, keeps, keeps the moisture from getting in, so a slurry seal is, is put down on a road that has very little cracking, has some, maybe some oxidation, you're typically looking at pavements that are anywhere from brand-new to about seven, sometimes 10-years-oldish for a slurry seal. Good condition, just, you want to, you want to keep them in that really good condition. The asphalt rubber forms a layer that, that seals and is flexible, and so it is almost like a bladder going over the road, and so it'll move, and so you can put it over surfaces, it's, it's a new process, and the exciting thing about it is, in the pavement preservation toolbox, we had a huge gap, so we had tools like slurry seals, chip seals, micro-surfacing, that you could use up to about maybe a 17-ish-year-old pavement, 20, depending on the conditions and where it's at. Once it started to see alligator cracking, extensive cracking, there really wasn't anything we could do with it. It was basically, you wait until you tear it all up and rebuild it again, and that's when it gets really expensive. So the exciting thing about this product is that it's, where it's been applied, we, Kevin and Les and I actually went over to, I guess it's been almost two years now, over to the west side in the Oregon area, in Portland area, where they'd put these, and you just wouldn't believe the streets that they're putting these down on, you know, extremely worn streets, and, and getting a lot of good life out of these roads that otherwise you're looking at a full rebuild on. And so it is a structural product, it is a, it's a, you're reaching for pavements that are far further down the degradation cycle with this product, and so, so it is something that, you know, rather than putting a very thin surface on a fairly new road and expecting to get about five-years-ish life out of a slurry seal, we're putting this surface down on far further-gone roads and expecting to get more like 10 to, hopefully, 13-ish-years' life out of this type of a product. I don't know if that.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question about that, too. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So, because we have upheaval, because of, and Portland doesn't have the same freeze, how does this then work? Does it allow, because of the flexibility?
Yeah, that, that was the big concern. That was one of the reasons that it took a while to spread, is because it was developed in the southwest, and it kind of spread up the California coast, but everybody was really nervous about using it where you had plows with a lot of down pressure and the freeze thaw, because you just weren't sure how it was going to react, and, you know, governments, we don't have a lot of money for road preservation, so nobody wants to be a guinea pig in an area where it hasn't been used that way. The California DOT was so happy with the performance of this product along the coastlines, that they started mandating the certain percentage of their budgets be used for this process, and so they said, this percentage of our, our maintenance budget has to go toward this type of product. And so the result of that was, you had areas like Lake Tahoe that started using it. You know, Tahoe sees lots of snow, freeze thaw, they're plowing with graders, and so other areas started to see this and say, okay, maybe we don't have to be as afraid of this, and so it started spreading then further inland, and so you have areas that have freeze thaw that now have used them pretty extensively. Like I said, we'd be the first in our area to do it, but, but they have been done in areas like this, and that is a benefit, you know, because we do have the freeze thaw cycle, and since it does maintain its flexibility, we don't see the cracks reflect through. You know, it's something that people say a lot, is you get into the costs and say, well, you know, you're getting fairly close to the cost of just doing an overlay, why don't you just do an overlay? And there are a lot of reasons for this, but one, an overlay, an unmitigated crack with an overlay will reflect through an overlay at about an inch a year, so if we put an overlay over a crack, if two-inch overlay, two years later, you would expect to see that crack reflect back through. On top of that, you have to do a milling process, you know, you have to either wedge-mill the curbs to accommodate that larger asphalt, because you can't just put two inches and not accommodate it on the edges, or you have to mill the whole thing down, and then, with the way that the ADA rules have been written, an overlay is considered a structural process, and, and it's, and so then we have, it triggers the requirement to rebuild the ramps, and so when you have to go in and rebuild the ramps, now you're looking at a project that, you know, potentially, you're, you're looking at an additional.
$50,000 for ramps?
Fifty, $60,000 on a project that you're only going to spend $100,000 on anyway.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's.
Can I throw in one question? Okay. In this process that you've seen, and with, because they're obviously filling in some of those, where the cars have the divots, how, how deep have you seen them be able to fill?
We, we have to be careful with rutting. We won't put it over where there's, where there's pretty extreme rutting. There are things you can do, you can go in and skin in the ruts, you can even go in with like a micro-surfacing and, and do a rut fill, so if there are any pretty drastic ruts, if the ruts were any deeper than about half an inch, you'd want to do some sort of fill with, with the ruts.
Before?
Before, and then go over with this product afterward.
Okay, yeah, so this isn't in place of, you still have to do the fill?
Yeah, you'd still want to fill ruts, if you had any significant rutting.
Given the location proposed for this, there probably isn't a lot of rutting going on.
No, there's cracking, there's extensive cracking, there's a lot of patches on this stretch, but it's, you know, the last time D Street had anything done with it was an overlay in 1994, I believe, so it's, it's been a long time, and it's, it's such a critical road, it carries so much traffic, and we're really within that window that if we do something with it now, we can address it and get some life, because having the funding to rebuild that whole road is just not a reality, and so we've, we've got to try and do something while we have the window and are able to do something with it.
Well, thank you for answering that, because that, especially with the rutting, that's the answer that I needed to know, because that's the question that actually, why can't you do it on this road? So you just gave that information, thank you.
Anything, Walter?
Tyler, I've talked to you about F Street from the school administration building up to the top of the hill in Orchard. It's, it's a wagon trail, it's got so many patches in it, it's rough. When you get this done, am I going to notice any difference with it, the way it drives, the way it rides?
You will notice some difference with the way it rides. I mean, it's, it's not new pavement, so it's, it's not going to be smooth, it, it will reflect the surface that's underneath it, it's, it's a thicker rock, it's a very thick aggregate, or emulsion, excuse me, and so it will have some dampening effect, for sure. It's not going to drive like brand-new pavement, but it, it will be an improvement, for sure.
Looking forward to it, we'll see.
So actually, you've got a slideshow on this that I'd like to bring back for show-and-tell here, or maybe at council, one or the other. Maybe council would be even better, when this shows up for that one.
Let me.
What do you think, Gary?
Yeah, let me take a look at the agenda, and when we get done, if it's not too loaded, that might be a good chance to rule that out.
Yeah, because it keeps everybody informed on what we're doing and why, and trying to stretch the street budgets.
Well, I think it makes sense, too, since you're trying a different process, and as we pointed out, since you're only getting about half of what we would have, with the slurry seal, it probably wouldn't hurt to roll that out.
Yep.
Okay, so you want this on regular agenda, then?
Yes, please. So I think it's good to pat the department on the back, say, good job. So, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, next up is the community playfields perimeter fence funding request, starring Dwight Curtis.
This'll take a little longer than the last one.
Really?
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. As you're all aware, we have the Moscow School District Community Playfields, and they're, we're getting ready to open up in the spring, and the original design did not call for a perimeter fence. You see enough fence out there, but that's been a, it's a construction fence, and the school district, after some heavy thought, has decided that they really do, they really would like a fence, and what we have out there right now is a six-foot construction fence, it's temporary, it's not installed in a permanent fashion now, so it would all have to be taken down and, and redone, anyway. But what they're requesting is a four-foot fence, which is pretty standard, and the cost of that fence was about $40,000. Thirty-four of it was for the fencing itself, 6,200 of it is for some irrigation head adjustment that we would have to do, and of course, as we've been going through this whole project, it's been split 50/50. I confirmed with the school district earlier today that they're still good with that in this particular case, and the reason for this fence is for use control and safety, and, I have in your packet a funding source proposal, which is in our capital projects, it's for a playground or a partial, it's an accumulation for a playground that we're not going to be able to get to this year, or there's also still the Hamilton Fund that you could consider as well. The existing fence, like I said, it's a, it's a temporary construction fence, the poles are not set, they're just, just pushed into the ground, the fence mesh is upside down, you know, we always, on chain link, you'll have that side that's, that'll rip you up if you try to cross it, and then, safety-wise, they have the bent sides. Right now, it's upside down, so that would still have to be turned the other way if you were to use the existing fence, plus it's been patched, and some of it's not very slightly. There's no top rail that we would have to add, and it's also adjacent to the existing path and sidewalks. This code calls for a minimum of one foot, we're looking to move it in two feet, and remove the sod, the turf that's there, and gravel that for maintenance reasons, and, and also, in its current configuration, it, you know, conflicts with some of the irrigation. So, the estimated salvage value, and this was, I can't hold the fellow to this, he was doing a guesstimate, I think, but he said about $4,500 in salvage, so of that $40,000, if that was the amount, you know, you just subtract the 45 off that, or whatever that, that value would be, and have a photo, or a map here showing where the, if you look at the red, that's where the, the fence would go. Over here, you don't need it, because the outfield fence already, already takes care of that, and then. And then, right now, you do have, sorry, need more caffeine, I think, I'm shaking. But we do have fencing right here. With the new fence, there would not be fencing there. So, and this does not include any fencing on the interior as well. It's just where you see the red. There are three, I think, ten-foot gates, access gates. One right here, one right here, I believe, and over here.
Is that one up at the top?
It's right there.
Is that one? I can't tell.
No, it just says four-foot chain link fence.
Okay, that may not be a gate.
That's right at the corner, Dwight.
Yeah, right there is one, one here and one here. Is that the one there? Yeah.
Yep.
So.
So four.
So those gates would be for just, when there's no games or anything that would conflict with somebody walking in there, those would remain open so that it's open to the public during non-scheduled time. And of course, when there's a game or something, they would close those gates. We would also use those for maintenance access. And I think that's pretty much it. Yeah, I didn't include all the close-ups, but this shows the same thing.
So does the parking lot have gates on it? Will there be gates there still?
The parking lots will have gates, yes. Those will generally be left open to special circumstances that they would be closed.
Gary?
Yeah, the Authorized Representative Committee comprised of school district representatives, Walter, Dwight, and myself reviewed this, talked about it, looked at whether it was possible to use the construction fence. It's just not set up, way too light a gauge of wire. As far as the funding source, as Dwight indicated, he's got a playground that he will not be putting in this year. All of the funding for the ball fields project has come out of the Hamilton funding. There's a balance of three million, fifty-five thousand dollars of funding in that. That certainly would be in conformance with the use of the Hamilton Fund. I say that merely because it's not a great amount of money. Of course, we'd like to keep as much as we can in there, but we're also, as you know, scrambling every year to try and accumulate funding for these playgrounds. And if the council decides that they do not want to tap that funding, then of course, that will just be rolled over into next year for the next playground. So six of one, half dozen of the other. But as this project has continued from Hamilton funding, I guess it would be my recommendation that we continue that revenue source.
Slightly different, but back to the fence itself, could you, what would it look like? What kind of fencing are we talking, like the heavier gauge, green?
Galvanized.
Yeah.
With a top rail, four-foot with a top rail.
I don't think it'll have the rail.
No rail?
I don't, well, it'll have the rail, I'm sorry, I was thinking of that yellow covering that you see. But yeah, it'll have the top bar on it.
Okay.
And it's not encased in plastic, you see these yellow, green, and black ones?
It's for the actual outfield areas, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, had it mixed up there.
Well, I had a question, and because, it's just wondering about the request. So, because the whole reason to switch to the four-foot had to do with safety and control, there are other ball fields, you know, on that same road. Has there ever been any issues that they felt like, that warranted going ahead and moving forward with the fence? You know, you know what I'm talking about?
I do not.
Yeah, Euler.
Euler has a, it has a fence.
Yeah, I know. And so I guess I just wondered if, if the reason that they wanted to, it was for consistency's sake, too?
Well, it's for consistency, all the, all their athletic facilities are fenced.
Oh.
And this is just along those same lines. They want flexibility as well. One of the things that school district's pretty adamant about is that there are no dogs on the property. It's not a dog park. They have their patrons get very concerned when their kids are playing in an area where dogs have been. So that's a concern. Dogs would not be allowed here. Additionally, they have restrictions, amazingly enough, they have restrictions on if they have district tournaments or state-type tournaments, they need to restrict the gates somehow. And this gives them the opportunity to do that. Without that sort of restriction, then they can't host those types of tournaments. So it's a big deal to them. It has the ancillary benefit of, we want it to be open to the public, lots of public dollars have gone into this thing, but, which is why you see so many big gates in it. But we'd also like to make sure that there's some ability to control the site, and this seems like a good way to do that.
Can I keep going?
Sure.
So does that mean you'll have signage? Is that included in this or is that going to come separately?
Well, the sign, there's a budget line item for signage, but yeah, it'll be signed. For dogs, I mean, you know, the pathways are on the outside of the fence, those will still be open to dogs on leash just inside. And then that's consistent with their present policies on their properties.
So you're just reminding people not to bring their dogs even to games, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Unless they're a companion animal.
Yeah, makes sense.
So what we're looking for is direction on not only council willingness to participate, but also the source of funding.
Any comments, Walter?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm a little conflicted on this. Originally, when the construction fence went up, my first question was, are we going to leave it up after we get the thing built? And was pretty much promptly told, no, it's a construction fence, it'll come down, it's going to go away, we don't need a fence. Well, we get down here to the end of the project and school district wants a fence, I believe primarily because they want to do control for ticket sales in order to get the revenue off of using these fields. Dwight tells me that the city does not, at this time, plan any revenue-producing type tournaments or anything like that. So from that side, we don't really need the fence for that kind of control. I do agree with something to keep the dogs out, or if they're inside, there's no doubt about they're in the wrong place. You know, you can tell by that. The fact that the parking lot entrance area will not be fenced, I don't see how they're going to control ticket sales with that situation. And the parking lot, as Dwight says, will not be fenced around its perimeter either. So I'm not sure that they're going to actually achieve the end result they want. I'm probably okay with voting for the city to pay half of the proposed forty thousand for dog control. I wish it were a black fence instead of a galvanized. There was a big, big deal about getting the backstop posts and everything black. They were not either painted correctly in the first place, they, we made them redo them, they worked hard on doing them, we wanted it to look right. I would really prefer a black fence around this as opposed to a chain link, but what is it, Wick's Field's got a soccer field that's a black six-foot, I think, around it.
Is it six-foot?
Yeah, it's tall.
I think it's a six. So I've got some mixed feelings about it. I'm probably not going to be a fan if the school district comes back and wants us to participate in fencing the parking lot so they can have better control for ticket sales. We'll see how that goes in the long run. Now Dwight, is your sod removal and gravel in your forty thousand dollar price?
Yes.
Okay. And the parking lot gates are included in the forty thousand dollar price?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be like Gary, I'd lean toward Hamilton Funds for this. The interest on forty thousand dollars is hardly anything. And I hate to take money away from the slim pickings we got for the playground development.
So what is about the cost differential between the galvanized and the black fence?
You know, I did not get a cost difference on that.
I thought, I don't know. I thought Bill indicated it was about fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
But I think that's what he said, but it wasn't so much, the cost was significant, but it was also the fact that that, the UV will-
Chip off the plastic.
Chip it off and it becomes brittle and then it really looks bad.
That was part of the issue. Fence leprosy.
Gary, the fence that you and I put at the old Kavanaugh's twelve years ago to control pedestrians cutting through the middle of that parking lot?
Yeah.
Looks as good to me today as it did when they put it up fifteen years ago.
I don't know, all I know is that-
And I've been over there and looked at it.
Yeah. All I know is that that was one of the concerns that was-
Yeah, I don't know what's on it, but it does, it's been sitting there in the weather for fifteen years and I don't know if any kids have gone by dragging a stick on it or not.
Well, if the council would like, we, I mean, this is certainly, since we're talking about utilizing even a slight amount of the Hamilton Fund, probably want to make it a regular agenda item. We can certainly price out a black fence and have that information as an alternative.
Nice, because I'm sure it'll come up again.
Okay.
One of the other people will ask.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm with Walter. I think using the Hamilton for this and saving money for further park development is advantageous.
The only thing that I would throw into that is that that part has not been approved by the school district, you know, additional money over what we had-
Over black.
Well, we had said the price was about forty thousand.
Yeah.
So if this was, let's say it's fifty thousand.
Well, we'd have to talk to them as well.
Yeah, for sure.
We'll take care of that as well.
But if the price comes out to be essentially the same, then, but what do you think, Kevin?
Well, I just wanted to get clarification on why did, what was, with the black, what's the reason, is, does it have to do with-
Aesthetics.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, I just checked.
Yeah, just looks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have that, you know, the sod will be moved back about six inches in from where the fence will be so that mowers and weed whackers aren't, you know, chipping it. I just didn't get over to check the universities to see if that has been chipping or not. From, I was talking to somebody a little earlier today and they were talking about a vinyl fence and, or vinyl coated. And from a distance, looked really good, but up close, you know, then you can really see it.
By council, can you check with the university and find out-
Yes, absolutely.
What their products are and how they, how they think they're holding up and what you see?
Yep. You got it.
Good. So we'll put that on regular and have another chat.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity for a little input here?
Sure. Come up here and, where we can get you on a microphone. And when you get up here, just name an address so we know who you are.
Sure. My name is Jim Cuska. I live at 1096 Randall Flat Road. I came to the area in seventy-two.
You need to sit over here, Jim.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, Jim Cuska, I came to the area in seventy-two. I live at 1096 Randall Flat Road. My background is landscape architecture, recreation planning. I'm seventy-six years old, I started that when I graduated in sixty-six. I saw in the paper about two weeks ago, a comment by Gary, and I've never met Gary, are you Gary? I tried to talk to you last week, but you were gone for a week.
I was gone.
So anyway, anyway, I saw the comment, whether it was correct or not, that we never intended this park to be a prison. Looked like a prison because it's got a six-foot fence. And that also, there'd be a four-foot fence and there's no budget for it at this time. Okay. Could you put the slide up there of, backup one? Okay, there. Okay, I just, I got concerned, so I just did a little homework and spent some time. Existing fence is temporary. And I was talking to a neighbor of mine who retired from WSU, and I was telling him about this. My understanding is the existing is it was kind of pushed in, I guess. You know, no concrete and so on. And I was talking to him and he says, well, at WSU, he says, we never dig a hole. He said, we have equipment, it's called a, I'm not sure what it's called, but you drive up to it and you vacuum out a hole. And I talked to him yesterday, and I stopped at his place today before I came here. I said, I want to make sure I got you right. You drive up to it, you put this vacuum there, you can go down two feet, no digging. Because the fence posts could stay in place, you could vacuum down and put gravel or concrete. So you could use that fence. The six-foot versus the four-foot along Mountain View, those are soccer fields. Two feet higher blocks out soccer balls, not all of them, no. But the six-foot, to me, is an advantage. Okay? I walked it, walked with an architect the other day and so on. The fences, of course, vertical, it looks very nice right now. Very nice. Okay, it's vertical, to the left of it is black asphalt. And somebody told me that, you know, we can't have black asphalt right against the fence because handlebars, kids bites. So I thought about that, so you got the fence in place, you got the asphalt, it's a pretty wide path. Okay, you could widen that path two feet, in other words, leave all that black top there, widen it two feet, paint a line there, and that's the bicycle path. And now you're not having bikes and people, parents walking with their kids and bikes coming through, so that's a positive. So you got the existing fence in place, you've widened the black top, you've painted a line. Okay, as far as the mesh is upside down, the mesh is upside down, that's correct. So the top is like this. Okay, you can, there's no bar there, the bar going across would protect that. I've gone to the junior high three or four times, I went again today. The six-foot fence around the football field, the baseball field, the track, going all the way up to the superintendent's building is a six-foot fence and the wire is exposed. So the school district has accepted that, there's been no lawsuits. But it could be covered up with putting a bar. So, okay, the pathways, something about the irrigation would have to be moved. Well, I don't know if the fence stays and the irrigation was put in-
If the fence stays, it doesn't have to move.
Doesn't have to be moved. So I kind of have a feeling that with the fence, you leave it in place, you got a six-foot, you expand the pavement, you separate bicycles and people, you've saved forty thousand dollars. I'm at a loss here, so.
Well, I'm kind of along the same lines of, it looks more foreboding than maybe it needs to with six feet of fence. I kind of like the four-foot size somewhat better, just because it's not as intimidating of a fence line through there. And putting the gravel down, moving it in with the gravel underlayment, saves a fair bit of maintenance and mowing and weed whacking around the posts and the bottom of the fence, too, so that has some advantages.
You can put, where you got the fence, you got the black top here. On the right side, you can put gravel down. So that takes care of the maintenance aspect of it. Because you're not mowing where you've got the black top itself, you know.
Yes, I kind of like the current proposal that we have before us to kind of fix it out, but I don't know, you guys can jump in, too. Feel free, Walter?
Like I say, my first thought was, leave it up. But then I was shouted down on that one, so then that went back around.
I'm not sure shouted, but-
Well, the only, certainly understand the comments. It is a lighter gauge fence, no doubt about that. The fence that it will be replaced with, council approves it, will be a heavier gauge. You will have some expenses that you're not going to avoid, and that is the top rail. Extending asphalt along a path is a fairly expensive proposition, we haven't bid that out either, or estimated that. So I think you're not going to get rid of all the cost. And even vacuuming holes out, resetting those same posts, and I don't know if the posts are of the gauge that you'd have, or whether they're temporary construction posts, I know nothing about that. You'd have to remove them, get your hole, then set them in concrete. There'd be a cost to that, too. So I don't think you're avoiding the whole forty thousand dollars.
You don't have to remove the post. I mean, if they're acceptable posts, it's all very nicely aligned. So if you vacuum that out, that post just stays there.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're talking about, though, is, don't they vacuum out a whole post hole and then add the post afterwards? Fill it with concrete and then-
All I can say is I talked to this fellow about that and that was his response, so.
Well, ask somebody who knows.
Yeah, we, I don't know which one you want us to say. Do you know? Um, yeah, we, I don't know. We do have several vacuum excavation units at the city. We have, we have our vac-all unit that's set up for vacuum excavation. You would have to remove the posts. They're, they're not set up to where you could, you could get in and effectively vacuum around a post. Post, fences are installed with vacuum excavation, you're absolutely right, they do that. You can go in and rather than digging, it's a clean way to do it. Most people install them, they use- You, most people in the install, they use an auger or a vacuum. And so you can go in and you can vacuum down the distance, but you couldn't do it with the post in situ. It wouldn't work that way. And so you, you couldn't just go in with, with the fence installed and the post in situ because as you started to vacuum around, it would destabilize that post. And so it would wobble and so that, so you, and with the, with the diameter of the tubes that you'd have to do, I guess technically you could do it, you could vacuum around it in situ, but it would take a really long time and be very hard to keep the fence aligned trying to do it that way. So what you'd really have to do is pull the material off, pop the posts out, vacuum the holes down in, reset the posts. So it'd be, it'd be, it'd be pretty labor-intensive.
And that's kind of like, who, I don't know, maybe that's something else to add to the looking at list for the council meeting is, are the posts sufficiently structural to last a long while? Or are they similarly light gauge as the fence?
Well, they're, yeah, they're typically, they're meant for control, they're not meant for longevity. And those fences typically, construction fences typically, in fact, if you recall, we rented that fence, leased it from the fence company.
Originally a rental fence.
And it ended up, we had it long enough that we bought it for several thousand dollars more just to own it outright so we wouldn't have to keep paying rent on it, so.
So now that's something else we could look at too and get a better idea.
We certainly have an answer for that on the first.
Well, I appreciate, let me talk. I'm under the impression, but I didn't measure them, that the gauge on the fence that's there is the same as the junior high. But you could check it out, I'm not, I didn't-
I didn't check it. Thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it. Dwight, Dwight, if you could, check the gauge on those posts in that fence please, as part of it as well for next week.
So, so we'll pass it on to the full council with, uh, additional information for discussion.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yep. And we've run out of agenda, so I think that also means that we're adjourned.
Okay, we quit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.